Good evening. Welcome to the February 25th, 2025 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. The city clerk could please take the roll.
Stevenson.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Esslinger.
Here.
Flohm.
Here.
Builo.
Here.
Mughawar.
Here.
Seven present.
Tonight we get to do something we haven't done in quite a few years. We have, if the city clerk wants to come on down, she can borrow the microphone. She's going to do a swearing in of our new city manager, Rebecca Grill.
My first step. Thank you. We're going to do the swearing in, both of office for the city manager. I'm going to put this right here and then, Reed, I'm going to ask you a question. If you could raise your right hand and then I'll have you sign it. Okay? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and uphold the ordinances of the City of Oshkosh and faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of City Manager for the City of Oshkosh, Wisconsin, to the best of your ability? Yes, I will. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. Thank you. And then I will go ahead and stamp it. Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we have Councilmember Stevenson leaving us in the invocation.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
This evening I have students from Carl Trager Elementary here with us tonight to help us with the pledge. I have Patricia Ocean and Keaton Orwork. If you guys could come on up here and join me up front.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. Very well done. Thank you very much for coming to join us tonight. Again, I have Patricia and I have Keaton, both from Carl Trager Elementary. I did forget to give you a heads up on this one. You have a chance, if you'd like, why don't you tell us who your teacher is at Carl Trager and maybe what your favorite subject is right now. All right?
My teacher is Mrs. Aronson in fourth grade and my favorite subject is probably science.
My teacher is Ms. Cordes. My favorite subject is math.
Very nice. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have introduction of staff. We have some new people in some new roles. Mr. Collins.
Yeah. Good evening. I'm here to introduce our new, or I should say our promoted, electric traffic manager, Dan Labuda. He's affectionately known as Stimey. I think that's a requirement of the position, that you have to have some type of affectionate nickname. So, we replaced a scooter with a stimey. So, just, most of you know, but just quickly, our traffic division is responsible for the city's electric infrastructure, which includes things like the traffic signals, fiber optic network, the streetlights, as well as electric in all the city buildings. So, he'll be working on all those things. He's been with the city for just about 28 years now. So, it's always a privilege to promote somebody that's been a dedicated, long-tenured employee. In his spare time, he, like a true Wisconsinite, he enjoys the outdoors and hunting and fishing. So, you want to say a couple words?
Thank you for the opportunity and I'm looking forward to the new challenges that this job will present.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Chief?
Well, I'm very happy to introduce two new members of my, well, one old member of my command staff who recently got a promotion and a new member of my command staff, the long-serving members of the Oshkosh Police Department. So, first I want to introduce you to Brian Shuldus, who's been with the Oshkosh Police Department for over 29 years, beginning on September 6th of 1995. Brian enlisted in the United States Marine Corps and served as a military police officer as a traffic and accident investigator before being honorably discharged in August of 1991. Brian then earned a bachelor's science degree in criminal justice from the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh where he graduated in 1995. Brian became a police officer with the Oshkosh Police Department and then in March 12th of 2007, Brian was promoted to the rank of sergeant, serving in the patrol division. On May 13th of 2013, he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, serving in the patrol division before being transferred to criminal investigations. On May 8th of 2023, Brian was promoted to captain, serving in the operations bureau before December of 2023, where he was transferred to the administrative bureau. Brian's been a member of several special teams, previously serving as a member of the honor guard, crisis negotiation, mobile field force, supervisor of the recruitment team, coordinator of the mental program, co-coordinator of the mental health resiliency committee, background investigator, and field training officer. He's done a lot for our department. So, I'd introduce you to Assistant Chief of Police, Brian Shuldus.
Thanks, Chief. I'm humbled to be selected to this position and I really look forward to serving the citizens of Oshkosh as Assistant Chief. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations.
And next I have Captain Andy Lecker. Captain Lecker has been with the Oshkosh Police Department for nearly 23 years, began on April 11th of 2002. In March of 2001, he obtained his law enforcement recruit academy certification from Midstate Technical College. He went on to earn his bachelor's degree in general resource management from the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point in December of 2001. Lieutenant Lecker is a 2021 leadership Oshkosh graduate, as well as a 2023 graduate of the FBI National Academy. He served as a patrol officer for seven years before being promoted to the rank of sergeant in October of 2009 in the patrol division. On March 9th of 2015, he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, serving in the patrol division before being transferred in 2017 to the professional standards division, where he served for over three years as a department's accreditation manager. In December of 2020, he was transferred to criminal investigations division where he served as a lieutenant. Captain Lecker is a former member of the bike patrol, mobile field force, the SWAT team. He's also an instructor of many different tactics here within the department. He also served as a field training officer. During his time on the SWAT team, he served as commander for six years. Since 2021, he has actively served on the executive board of directors for the day-by-day warming shelter. Under his leadership in the criminal investigations division, some of the department's most significant criminal and drug investigations have successfully been prosecuted. I give you Captain Andy Lecker.
I found out like two minutes before the meeting that I'd have to speak. But, thank you very much for the greeting. It's an honor to be selected for this position and I'm excited for the opportunity and the challenges that will be associated with it. I'm excited to be able to serve the citizens of Oshkosh in a new way. Thank you.
Congratulations, Captain.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we have citizen statements to council. I have, let's see here, let's do Lynn Phil first and then Deb Martin following. Right over here, please.
Over here.
Yep.
I've never been to one of these meetings before, so, I used to work downstairs in public health. Anyway, on January 11th, we had, I'm here speaking for our neighbors, we had a water main break on our road and the water main broke and kept running for hours, which I guess compromised the sewage system and we all ended up with sewage, water, and silt in our basements. I happened to be sick with noral virus when my neighbor called and unfortunately, the water had to be turned off for me because I needed to use the bathroom quite often. But, more unfortunately, our basements were swimming in sewage, silt, and water. So, the reason I'm here tonight is we have all started to file claims with the city and we feel like we, nobody's really followed up with us. We were told that night by the city workers, you know, "Don't worry, the city will help take care of this. We have insurance. Need to go down to the city clerk's office, file a form." And nobody has contacted us yet. The fellow that is working with me and Sue, his name is Doug Detley, I believe, and he's with the insurance company that represents the city. He has not contacted anybody himself, but Sue did reach out to him. I feel as a citizen that we're really being pooped. This was a huge, massive cleanup. I can't even begin to tell you. I cried for three days and I'm not kidding when I say that. We all had restoration companies come in. My bill was just under $6,000 and that was just for them to get the sewage silt and all the water out and spray with antimicrobial. Some of the basements, their bills were much higher than that. But, not only that, we had much more cleanup and things that, you know, nobody else can do for you. And I'm just really hoping that the city is going to step up, city clerk, the new city manager, the council people, that's what we have insurance, the city has insurance for, to cover these things. And I'm hoping, I'm speaking on behalf of Dorothy Whitsky too, who is an older lady that lives on the street right next to us, and she just said, you know, the same thing that we all echoed. We don't want any extra money, we just want our, the payment for the electrical, the plumbing. I mean, I had a geyser coming up and right underneath my furnace, or right next to it, but, you know, we all had a lot of bills over this. So, we're asking for your help in helping the citizens of our neighborhood take care of this.
Thank you. City clerk, can, without going into too much, is there any way that, at least pertaining to Ms. Phil, just because I know there's nothing on the agenda for her, to make sure that someone at least has responded in?
I can tell you, they received the claim yesterday, so he should be reaching out to you soon.
Okay.
But, they didn't receive the claim until yesterday, so.
Who's reaching out?
It would be, I believe Doug Detley is the one who's assigned to it.
Doug Detley did reach out to me. I heard one today, my claim, because I was on vacation.
I'm sending him an email right now, asking him to make sure that he reaches out to you.
Okay. But, I reached out to him and now I've been in contact with him and he's saying that he's trying to get a hold of somebody, Ryan Linkey, from the water place, because he hasn't gotten back to him. So, it's like, okay, you know, Miss Helen, who's? Is there any reason that you haven't communicated yet with the insurance company to let them?
I also got it yesterday, so the claim.
Okay. It feels to us like everybody's saying, "Oh, we just heard about this. Oh, we just, we just heard about this when," I mean, well-known, there were many homes that were affected by this. And my claim was written in January, so you should have heard about my claim.
Okay. And I only looked up your name because you were the one who signed up. Sorry.
Mine is norm.
Yep. That's the one that we got yesterday.
But, I just knew that a coming meeting was coming up and so, we're just making our plea personal.
Appreciate that.
I'm literally sending him an email right now, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up, Deb Martin. Deb, just to make sure, this wasn't on any of the housing things on the agenda, right? Okay, thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you that this council really seems to be taking active interest in the shortage of housing in Oshkosh, affordable housing. You're doing some great stuff at the schools and so on. I just want to make sure it stays front of mind. For instance, that one is the poorly maintained rental housing. I have a friend who our church helped come here as a refugee about three years ago. She now has a $5,600 bill for an apartment that they now, they moved from and I know the building where she lived was terrible and now the landlord wants her to pay for the renovations, which should have been made before she moved in. So, again, just to support a tenant resource center, because when I was trying to figure out how to help her, I had no idea. I do live in a rental unit, but mine's great and I'm very, I've been there 10 years, it's great. But, for her, it was really difficult to figure out what to do. She has, she doesn't speak English very well either, but I do and it was still difficult. So, something like a resource center that could help tenants and landlords better communicate about the resources available. And again, thank you that you are paying attention and I see some progress being made. So, thanks.
Thank you. Can I real quick? Yeah. Hey, Deb? You don't have to run away, but if you get a chance, you can tune into last night's diversity?
Diversity?
Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, where we talked extensively about a tenant landlord resource center. And our recommendations to send to council about those topics. So, if you have any, if you watch that and you have any more information that you want to send to me or any of us, feel free to do so.
Thank you. I will. Thanks.
Good update. You were supposed to do that later, but we'll do that now.
No, no, that was, that was. Did you put me in the wrong spot?
If there's no other citizen statements to council, we'll move on to consent agenda.
I was registered.
Dale, right? So, you wanted to speak on the overnight parking, right?
Yeah. Last minute, it's an agenda item.
It is an agenda item later for us to discuss, but we allow citizens to speak on it, but you have to wait until that's brought up later in the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately, it'll be a little bit before we get to it, but I'll call on you first. All right? Sounds good. Thank you. I have no one registered to speak on anything consent related, so I'll take a motion and a second for consent.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on consent agenda? Councilmember Larson, but nothing showing up over here, so this is going to be a fun night if that's happening.
Is this out?
Oh, this is going to be great.
Can you hear me clicking?
The floor is yours.
Mine's easy and Director Collins already answered it. Jimmy, is he still back there?
Yeah, he's coming up.
Okay, good.
You drag it out, he might get here in time.
Yeah, you know I will. I always drag it out. This is about lamp posts. It's one of my favorite subjects in general. Well, I think we'll all recall, there's a neighborhood on the east side of the city that had beautiful decorative lamp posts. These look great also, which is why I asked for the picture to be included, so we could see it. And I just wanted everybody at home to know, if this was my neighborhood, I would want to be sure that if we're paying for these nice ones now, there's a way to have nice ones when these wear out or if somebody hits one. So, Jimmy, you're already gracious enough to answer my question, but if you could do it again, that'd be great.
Oh, sure. So, these streetlights are being installed as part of a road reconstruction project. So, in that case, the cost is included in the reconstruction project in that budget. But, Councilmember Larson asked how we would replace these if something would happen and there's, the answer is three different ways. Number one, when the roads reconstructed, like we're doing now, they would obviously be included as part of the project budget. The second way is if they are damaged or knocked down by somebody or something, the responsible party and/or their insurance company would get charged for that and then we would replace them with a like-type pole and fixture. And then, option number three is if they do not have insurance or are unable to pay, then that is in the city's capital improvement budget. We do budget a little bit of money each year for replacement of traffic signal and street lighting poles and fixtures.
And, not to go too far, but this is infrastructure that we own. We've put this in, we own it, and so that's why we're able to do this compared to some of the other discussions we've had where it's public service owned, which created some different challenges, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. And that's, I believe that'll be a council discussion in the future.
Sounds good. Thank you for the clarification. Good question.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on consent? And I'm going to remind, let council know that I can't see it when you press your button, so just keep pressing. Be patient with me tonight.
Raise your hand.
If, no other comments, if you'll take the role on consent.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Curried Seven.
We have one new ordinance, no anticipated action this evening. Ordinance 25-76 amend ordinance 19-7.1 regarding display of boat launch permit. Again, that'll come at the next council meeting for discussion and action. Moving on to new resolutions, we have Resolution 25-77, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Oshkosh, Wisconsin, requesting legislative relief to create consistency in fireworks enforcement throughout the state of Wisconsin. I have no one registered, I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
And I think Councilmember Nichols.
Yeah, thank you. First, thanks to the city attorney's office for helping draft this resolution. There was some back and forth and it was super helpful, but as everyone likely remembers, we had a lot of conversation, it was probably August of last year, where a couple of weeks after 4th of July, we were still seeing fireworks in the sky and we had some people come in and talk about some trauma that they had experienced earlier in life and some mental health issues where the noise from the fireworks were impacting them. We, as a council, decided to increase the fine associated with unauthorized use of fireworks. There's a permit associated with shooting off fireworks in the city.
I think there's an echo here.
But, so, that's all that we could do. And so, what we decided and what we talked about is sending a resolution to our four representatives of Madison to say, "There are some changes to state law that we would like to see." And I'll just mention what this resolution is asking for. Number one, it's to require municipalities to directly issue permits for the use of fireworks rather than delegate the permitting process to a third party, like it can be done today. Number two, to make it clear that permits must be issued by the municipality where the fireworks will be used, not where they're sold. And the third is if a municipality wishes to issue fireworks permits, it must have the consent of neighboring municipalities where they may also be used. We heard from Chief Smith when we were talking about the options for Oshkosh and correcting this issue, that while we don't sell any fireworks within the city limits of Oshkosh, they are sold 1,700 feet away from the city limits of Oshkosh. And so, we're trying to fix that issue as well. So, if the legislator takes up these requests, Oshkosh residents would less likely experience trauma related to the use of fireworks due to PTSD, mental illness, or anything else. So, again, thanks to the city attorney's office for helping draft this.
I see no other people wishing to speak. If you'll take the role on Resolution 25-77?
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Curried Seven.
Resolution 25-78, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Oshkosh, Wisconsin, requesting that the state legislature permit municipalities to use a prior year's property valuation. I have no one registered, please, I'll take a motion and a second, please.
So moved. Second.
I think, Councilmember Flohm, thank you.
Right. I also want to thank the city attorney's office and the city clerk's office for helping draft this and Councilmember Nichols for your idea on this. There's been a lot of discussion about this, about what council can do, what council can't do, and I want to thank our state legislators who have been involved in recent conversations, Representative Paul Mary, Representative Gustafson, who was there last Tuesday, in addition to Senator Curbol Guevara's office, who sent her staffer Sidney over to have a discussion last Tuesday. And so, for this, we're basically telling the state, "Can you give us some legislative workarounds for the revaluation process if it doesn't come back in the way that would be beneficial to our taxpayers?" As we saw, there was too much of an emphasis on residential properties in the past revaluation, that's why we're going to revalue again. Commercial was undervalued. So, it's asking DOR to give us some leeway. We think we did do some pretty drastic measures for our budget last time around in order to make sure that tax increases were not too drastic. So, we kept the levy flat, but the issue is with the property value skyrocketing with the revale, it created a lot of upward pressure on the levy for a lot of people. So, I'm very excited to see this go to the state. I'd like to see them get to work on this, give us some sort of exit ramp when we face situations like these and I think it'll be helpful for not just us, but other municipalities around the state.
Comment, one more thing.
Nichols and then Esslinger.
Councilmember Nichols and Councilmember Esslinger. Thank you.
Thanks. And again, thanks to the city attorney's office for helping me draft this resolution. Like we talked about and like Councilmember Flohm mentioned, we didn't have a lot of options when our commercial property was undervalued according to the Department of Revenue. And we had asked the state if we could actually go back to 2023 numbers and they told us, "No, that's not allowed under state law." So, what this resolution does is, number one, ask us if something is inequitable in terms of a revaluation, to go back to the previous year's numbers. And then alternatively, if that is too blanket of an issue for the state legislature, to allow us to delay the implementation of the new values for two years. So, we actually have time to make up. One other thing I would mention is if this rule were in effect today and the council had reduced the levy like we did in 2024, everyone's property taxes would have gone down. Because this rule wasn't in place and because the state didn't allow us to revert back to 2023 numbers, we saw a significant increase in property taxes, especially for those properties where there was an uptick in their value, really relative to the previous values. So, this is a good thing. This helps not only Oshkosh, but it would help every municipality in the state. And so, that's what we're doing and requesting our four representatives to take this to the legislature, as well as the governor, to focus on it as he looks to the budgeting season and legislative season in 2025. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Esslinger. Thank you, Mayor.
I want to echo, I guess, what the other council member said. I really want to thank Councilmember Nichols and the staff for putting this together. This is fantastic. I know some may look at this as some kind of feel-good thing that we're going to turn to the state. I don't think so. I think this is long overdue. We should be doing more of this, quite frankly. It's time for our representatives in the state to start listening to us because sometimes we actually know what we're talking about and they can help us out. That's what their job is. And this does that and as Councilmember Nichols said, had we been able to do that, most if not all of the issues that we had would never have been here. So, again, I'm hoping that they look at this and they create something where they allow not just the city of Oshkosh, but any city that gets into this type of trouble to work things out. We knew that the assessments that we had were wrong, but what's the problem with having, using the old wrong assessments versus the new wrong assessments and create all these problems? So, again, this is, I'm excited for this. I just hope that it actually goes somewhere and they do something with it. Thank you.
Just want to say, appreciate Councilmember Nichols and staff, of course, working with the council member to put this and the last one together. If they don't know something's broke, there's no way they can fix it. And so, I appreciate taking the time, putting pen to paper and helping to bring light at the state level to issues that not only affecting us, but, as you've mentioned, municipalities throughout the state. So, appreciate the effort on that. If there's no other comments, if clerk will take the role on 25-78?
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flohm.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Curried Seven.
Resolution 25-80, approve adjustment to go-transit, paratransit service hours. Transportation committee recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Mayor.
Push the button for just a moment. I just really wanted to thank city staff on this. I know there was a proposal a while back to make paratransit hours match fixed route service and they heard a pretty loud feedback from our community that for somebody like me, where I can get a ride, I can get an Uber, I can get a taxi on Sunday, some of the people that use our paratransit service cannot. We also discussed this last night at our diversity equity inclusion committee and just wanted to point out, this is DEI at its very best, thinking about accessibility and equity for all of our citizens and making sure that they can get around. One of my friends who uses a powered wheelchair, she literally would not have been able to go to church services on Sunday. She's not somebody that even I can give a ride to, it just doesn't work that way. You have to have a specialized vehicle. So, I very much appreciate our city staff looking at ways that we can be more aggressive
Esslinger.
Absolutely.
Flom.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven?
Resolution twenty-five dash seven-nine, approve setting public hearing date for partial right-of-way vacation, Marion Road, Plan Commission recommends approval. I have no one registered, I'll take a motion in a second on this.
So moved second.
Any discussion? If you'll take the role in twenty-five dash seven-nine?
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven?
Resolution twenty-five dash eighty, approve adjustment to go-transit, paratransit service hours, Transportation Committee recommends approval.
So moved second.
Any discussion on this? Deputy Mayor?
Push the button for just... I just really wanted to thank city staff on this. I know there was a proposal a while back to make paratransit hours match fixed route service, and they heard a pretty loud feedback from our community that for somebody like me, where I can get a ride, I can get an Uber, I can get a taxi on Sunday, some of the people that use our paratransit service cannot. We also discussed this last night at our Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, and just wanted to point out, this is DEI at its very best, thinking about accessibility and equity for all of our citizens and making sure that they can get around. One of my friends who uses a powered wheelchair, she literally would not have been able to go to church services on Sunday. She's not somebody that even I can give a ride to, it just doesn't work that way. You have to have a specialized vehicle. So I very much appreciate our city staff looking at ways that we can be more aggressive in our finding contractors who will do it. I understand the 24 service was no longer tenable, but I really appreciate the collaboration that you've done with the citizens to make sure that we have a wise solution. So thank you very much.
Well said. Do you want to share anything, Jim? I'll put you on the spot.
No, I think I can just give a general statement. You know, I think that historically, you know, as Councilmember Bulo mentioned, we have in the city provided 24-hour, seven-day-a-week paratransit service. As time has went on, it's become more difficult to recruit and retain both drivers and contractors to provide that service. We are the only city in the state that does that. Almost everybody matches their paratransit hours to fixed route as is required by law. However, we heard from the citizens at our public hearing, as well as we attended the County Aging Disability Resource Center board meeting and also held a focus group. It tried to come to a resolution that give us some relief, but also would allow those citizens to get to where they're going. And so I think we reached a reasonable compromise, it should help us out a little bit, but then it also should help our citizens out as well. So I think in the end, it was a good resolution.
Good. If there's no other, Councilmember Stevenson?
I'll be abstaining from this, the organization I work for did the study, so just when you guys hear me say present, that's why.
Okay. If there's nothing else, City Clerk, if you'll take the role on twenty-five dash eighty?
Stevenson.
Present.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried six-one, present.
Resolution twenty-five dash eight-one, approve recommendation for the layout of Bowen Street in the area of the intersection of Mill Street and Wagu Avenue. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved second.
Any discussion? I see none. If you'll take the role on twenty-five dash eighty-one?
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven?
Resolution twenty-five dash eight-two, budget amendment for 2025 fire special revenue fund funding assistance program to approve an increase in expenditures of $4,800. Take a motion in a second, please.
So moved second.
Discussion? If you'll take the role on twenty-five eighty-two?
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Bulo.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried seven?
Well, that concludes the action items for this evening, and I will move on to the council discussion, direction to city manager, future agenda items. I do know we have two people who are registered to speak on two of our discussion items. First thing up, though, discussion direction to city manager, biennial budget, this was asked for by Councilmember Larson. Councilmember Larson, the floor is yours.
Sure, and I can keep the beginning of this really short. We talked about this briefly at the budget workshop, so we all kind of know that it's a possibility, which is good. I have three reasons that I think this might be good to implement. We spend a lot of time on the budget, it's a big process, I understand it's important, it's probably the most important document we draft as a community every year. It's a big commitment, and I think that there are efficiencies in doing it once every two years, not every year. I think it's not going to take twice as long to do it, so that's kind of reason number one for me. I think there can be more consistency in tax bills for taxpayers if we know what we're looking at two years in advance, it's just more consistency, more knowing what it'll look like in advance, as we all saw, this year was an anomaly, it'll never happen like that again, I hope, but it'd be good to know more of the things before we need to know them. And I'm hopeful that if we look at things at a larger period of time, two years instead of one, there's more opportunity for departments to find that middle-of-page savings and look for ways that we can make up dollars that we all know we need to find somewhere. So those are kind of the three main points for me, I'm excited to talk about it with you guys. I don't know if we go anywhere with it or not, but I think it'd be great.
Councilmember Flom?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo those points, I think a biennial budget, or at least looking at it, is a good idea in terms of creating more consistency for staff, taxpayers, and for staff time and council time. For me, probably the trickiest piece is going to be going from our annual budget now to a biennial budget, when we pull that trigger, when we decide to move in that direction. Obviously, it'll be a bit more work the first time, but I think that work will pay off and pay dividends for residents and for all of us here. So I actually have a couple of questions for Julie, if that's okay.
Good evening, Ms. Cops.
Thank you very much. Question for you is, in terms of moving to a biennial budget process, how much extra anticipated staff time do you think you will use and then you will probably save in years subsequent? You may not have the answer for that now, I totally understand that. I don't mean to ambush you at all, but the idea that I have is that while this may take a little bit more time upfront, we will realize the time savings benefit in the future. Do you think that's possible, would you agree with that, or not so much?
I have not researched it extensively, I have not had time, but just based off, I read a lot of the government finance officers forums, GFOA, so I've heard mixed reviews from municipalities across the nation. I mean, GFOA forums, you have responses from every state, so there have been forums and there have been questions on that exact question. Some people say there's a lot of efficiencies, some say you basically go through the entire process that second year and do a huge budget adjustment. So I've heard both sides of the story. I have not had time to do extensive research to see which one I think would happen for Oshkosh.
Yeah, you know, looking at it from a top-down perspective, I do think that time savings would be evident, knowing that there may need to be budget corrections and budget repair ordinances that we may need to pass over time, just that's the reality, that's those things that happen. But for finding efficiencies, for getting more predictability in the tax levy, I think it's at least worth looking at. So I'm with Councilmember Larson on this, I think this is a good idea, I'd like to see us study it and discuss it further.
Councilmember Stevenson indicated before Councilmember Nichols, so we're going to go Stevenson, then Nichols.
Okay, got it. I don't know, I'm skeptical about this. I really think this time saving, I guess I would look to staff to maybe if they wanted to look into this more. I think the time savings we would get from this is going to be negligent. You guys are still going to have to do an audit that's yearly, we're still going to have to set the tax levy that's yearly. You guys are still going to have to go to all your department heads and say, what did you spend in a year, and tell me what you're going to spend next year, regardless of if it's on a two-year basis or not, you're still going to do that annually, I know you guys are. You're not going to let two years go by until you ask your department heads what they spent. So I think really the only time-saving measure we have here is, you guys don't have to explain the budget to council every year. And I am a little hesitant on giving that up personally, because I really like the budget process. I think council members and budgets passed, the reason we have such a robust council involvement in that budget process is because council asked for that. They said, we want involvement, we know this is probably the most important document we put every year, setting the budget is literally one of the most important things a city can do, and having those frequent and long discussions with council on budgets and having those budget touchpoints, I think is good. I worry that if we go to a two-year process, it's just going to end up in huge reconciliations at the end of two years, and very frequent council kind of calling you up and saying, I want to change this fire trucks bill, or I want to buy something else. I think it's going to, I think, in my mind, the limitations outweigh any sort of savings we could get. So, and again, I have experience with municipal budgeting, just knowing on the inside how this is going to work, staff is still going to put a lot of time and effort into making a budget regardless if it's two-year or one-year.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thanks. So I completely agree with Councilmember Stevenson's hesitations here, but I only agree if we structure the budgeting process exactly like we have it today. I think that if we are very intentional by a biennial budget, we have the opportunity to say, this is what today, this is what the next two years are going to look like. And in 20, if we do this for 2025, in 2026, we can say, well, this is how we're actually going to cut expenses looking into the next year. And so the focus is not just on creating the budget every year, it's actually going to be creating the budget and then cutting expenses. So it's that managing the middle-of-the-page piece. On the private side, I've only ever seen annual budgets, but that's because we have an EBITDA target, and we don't have an EBITDA target as a city, thank God, because then all of our taxes would go up. But I think that we could do it in a way that is incredibly intentional and incredibly structured, but I would want staff's total buy-in, if that's the case. If there are hesitations or doubts there, then this just isn't going to work, because we all know that while we are involved in the budget process, the seven of us up here, we are not the ones writing it. We are making recommendations and asking for information, and sometimes we will say, we need to see these changes in this amount of money, but the individual line items are not something we necessarily touch directly. So we would need staff's total buy-in, and I'm not hearing that resounding buy-in right now. And I guess because of that, I have a timing question. I looked into this at a very high level, and I believe that we would have to do it this year, we can't do it next year for a biennial budget according to state law, is that right?
That's how I read the statute.
Only odd-number years, so we would need, and you are already in the budgeting process, I imagine, and if not, you're pretty close to it, so we would have to decide this now, is my thought there.
We have not started the budgeting process yet, especially with the new city manager coming in. Technically, it's the city manager's budget that we present to council, so I wanted to make sure we had Rebecca's buy-in. So we actually had a meeting this morning to discuss when we're going to start the process and how we are going to look at the timeline and what differences she did in West Ellis versus what we do in Oshkosh compared to what I was used to in my previous municipality. So we are starting those conversations, but I was waiting for Rebecca to start before we actually kicked off the budget season.
Appreciate that, and Ms. Grill, if I can have the pleasure of asking you the first question you've had.
I should have jumped on that one, that's...
And I know this is putting you on the spot, but it can't be a surprise, just at a high level, what is your initial reaction to the idea of creating a two-year budget in your first year versus a one-year budget in your first year?
In my first year, I think that it would be very challenging, also given the situation that we're already going to be facing with the structural deficit. I think it's something definitely worth looking into, and as Julie mentioned, as we go through the process, we'll be able to look at different ways that we could maybe structure something differently. I was already looking at the calendar, and I made a few notes about, well, maybe we should do this or that, get the council involved a little bit earlier and things like that. So I think you might be setting us up to fail if you would go forward with it this year, but that's your choice, we'll do whatever you decide. But I would respectfully request that we get the opportunity to look into it and maybe approach it in 2027.
Absolutely, and that makes a ton of sense, and certainly we don't want to set anybody up to fail. I think that my request, and I won't speak for anybody else, but as we are considering the idea of a biennial budget in 2027, and it sounds like we may want to consider that as a group, I would ask that if you all could take notes on where you would see the benefits and the problems as you're going through the 2026 budgeting process.
I did have the opportunity to look at, I think it's River Falls and Whitewater that do that, I did look in their budgets, and it looks like for River Falls, it kind of cuts their process a little bit in half. Whitewater, they have the same budget calendar for both years, so I don't know if there was a difference, and I didn't have opportunity to call them, but yeah, we will definitely, yes, be looking at things as we walk through it.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor first, and then Councilmember Esslinger.
So a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but a quick question to council members Larson, Flom, and Nichols, did you like having input into the budget that we had this year? Because if we had a biennial budget, you guys would not yet have had input. A council member would get on and then not have input for about approximately eighteen months. So because we do elections every year, I don't think that is going to be a favorable outcome to then not have their input into a budget. And I wanted to be the first one to throw it to Rebecca, so...
Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. I've said it many, many times before, when there are issues that you have to resolve, sometimes you have to, I hate the saying, but think outside of the box. We really need to look at doing things differently in all facets of government, no matter what level. So when Councilmember Larson brought this up, I was intrigued and am intrigued by this. I remember in the old days when we had budgeting, literally the council would get together in, oh, I think early October, and we'd have two or three meetings of eight hours or more apiece, and this, I mean, we'd just bury ourselves and do this, and it was very stressful, and I mean, this is what we signed up to do, I understand that, but it was a very cumbersome experience. And so I remember then kind of getting updates along the way, which is very helpful, hey, here's what we've got coming up, so you can kind of get your mind around some of the things that are coming up. So are there any issues here? I think there is. And I think maybe doing it the old way, because there are issues, and we're not going to resolve them by doing the same thing over and over and over again. So I'm intrigued by this, I think there are three different, three things that we need to take into consideration. Number one is, how would this be for the council? How would it be for the staff, and how would it be for the citizens? So in my analysis, and I would suggest for the council and the city staff, is looking at it from those three standpoints. I would appreciate anything that is going to help the council do its budgeting easier. I'm not saying it's going to be less work, it'll be just spread out, I think maybe over a little more time, but that's yet to be determined. But I think it would be better for the council, the staff, I'm not sure, that's where I would love to hear our new city manager, Grill, do maybe a little more research in this, because I would respect her opinion on this. I mean, as much time as council puts into this, you can pretty much put tenfold in what the city manager and the finance director and others do, this is, I mean, a lot of time for them. So if it helps the council out but burdens the city staff, then I'm probably not going to be in favor of it. And I trust that they will come up with, you know, a reasoning of whether it is beneficial for the staff or it is not. So I don't think I've heard that yet tonight, and I don't think it's fair for me to say, I need your answer now, because I'm not going to get it, I know that, and again, it's just not fair to ask for that. And then the citizens, you know, I don't think the citizens really care how much time council puts into it or the city staff, they just want to make sure that the budget, we make the right decisions for the budget, and we have a good thinking process that goes along with that, however that may be. So, but ultimately, the citizens are the ones that have to come out ahead on it. So those are the three areas where I would weigh on what, if it's something that we should change. Thank you.
I thought I heard a button pressed somewhere over there before.
I turned mine off.
Okay, I can't tell anymore. So if that's the case, then I'll go, a brief statement, a brief comment on this one. What I've actually been hearing is roundabout ways of talking about continuous improvement. What we haven't talked on necessarily is what's wrong with our current process, at the individual view at least. So one takeaway for me to council members, since we're the ones that are going to give direction eventually, is to make sure that we share with finance and with the city manager's office, if we actually have specific problems with our current process, we should be sharing those, so that way they have the opportunity to improve the process for us. They're the ones that are going to go through it, I think to a couple of your points, that they're going to spend the most amount of time on this thing that we do, and it is the most important thing that we will do as a community every year, but that we continually try to be better and do it better. But that we continually try to be better and do it, do it better. It's not always about saving time, it's just doing better. And it could be for the citizens, staff, of course, and then a better product for us to digest and to, to share out. Given that we have a new executive who's, you know, first day was yesterday, and then we have a relatively new, at least two, leading our finance team here, but a very experienced finance director, it's appropriate to give them, in my opinion, time to figure out what do they think is best and make that recommendation to us. So I'd hate to jump into and rush and push for something that we don't know, we don't know. And maybe it is best in, in two years after we've gone through this process and after we've gotten a lot of feedback. I think that, what I'm, what I'm hearing a lot is continuous improvement, that you guys want to get better at this. That is a good thing. We should be striving for that. We should be pushing staff to, to that in every facet of, of city government. And I'm all for that. It'd be interesting to hear when the time is right, what the suggestions are in terms of how to do this better. So I think that's, I really didn't have a question, but just kind of a, kind of a blanket statement there. So anybody else have anything on this one? Doesn't sound like we have any resolution on this one, but that's okay. It does sound like staff's going to work on their, their process here, and I really encourage council, be specific with areas for improvement that you want to see. That's a good thing.
If I may ask one question, just, it's relevant.
Sure, to me or to somebody else?
To someone else. Thank you. This, this budget cycle, the, the reassessment that we are doing this year, and I'm, I'm looking at Kellyve and Julie and maybe everyone, it is going to have a big factor in the actual tax costs for residents in Oshkosh, for residential properties. Do we have a timeline for when we expect that revaluation to be completed?
You mean like the next one?
Well, we're doing it right now.
Sure.
We're currently working on a timeline, but I think this has been communicated with council members probably late last year. In order to align with the Department of Revenue's equalized values, we are going to make sure that we wait until those are released, the preliminary numbers are released in the first week of August. So that will push our process back. So in theory, you know, we'll have a pretty good idea by early August, but we're still going to have our open book in August. Our border review will probably be in September. So we're hoping by the end of September, early October. Certainly, we'll be sharing the information with the finance department well before that, but we will not have that specific number until we're done with border review.
Great, thank you.
As a follow-up, just for clarification for those listening, maybe, this is a, this is a two-path approach, right? The reassessment, reevaluation thing happens over here, the budgeting happens over here, and at the very end, they meet up in terms of how it impacts the ratepayers in the city of Oshkosh, the taxpayers.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's independent.
Yeah, and then just make sure we all remember, there's three other taxing entities that we have no control over and that are part of the equation, too. Maybe I'll let Julie talk a little bit about that. The mayor was dead on. I mean, you have the revaluation, you have the assessment process, that's all Kelly's division. You have the budgeting process, that's the tax levy. That is what the city manager and the council and finance, we work very closely on, because we can control the tax levy. That's the total amount of dollars that the city receives. You take the tax levy, divide it by the assessed value, and that's how you get the tax rate. So it's exactly right at the end when they meet up. And I just want to throw it out there one last time. Yes, commercial came in slightly lower than residential, but I don't think you're going to see that huge shift that you think you're going to see in that tax rate next year. So I just, I want to throw that out there one last time, because I know I've said it before, but I just want to keep saying.
I don't think this will be the last time.
I know, but I don't want to keep hearing, you know, like, staff said it was going to be this big switchback. I don't, in my personal opinion, I don't see that huge switchback.
Councilmember Larson.
I just want to clarify one thing, Kelly, while you're here. Open book not until August. Last year was June, or am I losing my mind?
Correct.
Okay, so the whole process is much later.
Correct.
I, I'm of, and if I'm missing somewhere, I apologize. I think everybody in the public is of the opinion that it's happening on the same timeframe as it did last year, like end of May, new values, June, open book, June, border review, August, and then the rest.
Yep, so that was the timeline last year. So we are working on public communication with our new consultant and obviously with Oshkosh Media that will be getting out to let folks know the new timeline.
Got it. Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Wrestler.
Yeah, just maybe a, a follow-up. I think if we come up with a timeline on, I mean, I don't want to see this on the agenda in December, figuring out what we're going to do with this, one of these things that keeps coming back, meeting after meeting. So I guess I'm asking the city manager what she feels would be an appropriate amount of time for you to kind of chew on this and with, with the staff and come up back with a recommendation of, yes, this is a good idea, or no, this is a bad idea.
Well, I definitely would want to talk with Julie, but I would think at least through the end of this budget process, so sometime probably in the first quarter of next year, we'll have time to evaluate what we've done this year, talk to other people that, or other municipalities that have done this, and then look at it from the three ways that you mentioned before.
Right. So then, we kind of made a decision then tonight, is this will not be taking place this year.
I hope that you made that decision.
I'll give a nodding head on that.
Yeah, I don't like nodding heads, I know. And I'll, I'll not digress, but Paul, I appreciate that very much, and since I brought it up, I think that's a great solution. And I was never asking for this to happen now. In a perfect world, it would have happened, we would have said, last August, let's look at this right now, because we don't like this. But I understand that that's time-consuming. So with all due respect to the process, I think it's great that we look at it. We will obviously be scrutinous of what we like and what we don't like. We'll tell you, as you know, because we do that. And if we can look at it next spring for '27, I think that's a great decision. So I appreciate it, and I thank you all for the discussion as well.
Councilwoman Flohman.
And just, just to follow up, I would rather look at this judiciously and responsibly than rushing headlong into something that may be tougher on staff than, than originally envisaged. So by all means, take your time to do as much research, research as possible. It is a rather large process, so I'm fine with waiting for an implementation time period of 2027 if need be. Just want to make sure that it's the right decision before moving in that direction.
If there's nothing else on this one, we'll move on to the second discussion point, funding possibilities for coordination of shelter during extreme cold. This is from the deputy mayor.
Thank you. And I wanted to get this on as a discussion point. As the city council members know, the city has traditionally taken an advisory and coordination role when it comes to shelter. We don't, we don't have a human services department. We don't provide direct shelter or anything like that. However, we're also in a situation where our nonprofits are full in that capacity, both financially and physically. The county has been unable to expand what, what they've been offering, and we still in Oshkosh have a situation where we have no emergency shelter for families of any, you know, there's several nonprofits that are doing everything they can, and I fully recognize that, having worked in that space for quite a while. But, but it gives us a, a situation where we're still, in my opinion, coming up short for, for what this community needs. I got reached out to me by a local faith community who said they have space and they have desire, but like many organizations, they don't have staff or money. So we had several late-night coffee meetings, just talking about what could be done, and we came up with some, an emergency shelter model that would run on basically volunteers from faith-based organizations with one paid coordinator position to kind of coordinate the shelters, coordinate the, which volunteer team is doing it, coordinate the training. And then, and I'm definitely not throwing shade, but you know, I'm seeing budget, or agendas where we are finding $50,000 to repair a train, we're finding money for other causes, and I, I have to ask the question, like, is this something where we can, where we can do something? I know, because I was through the two days of the budget meetings, and, and I don't want Julie to pop her head off, we can't absorb another FTE. We, we don't have it in our budget, it's, it's not possible. But is there some sort of funding source where we can partner with the county or partner with something to, to push this along rather than just trying to play the coordination role of, of becoming directly more involved? And I do know also, I just want to state that I, we've already allocated funds and personnel through OPD to be a downtown resource outreach team, especially for homeless individuals, people that are, that are unsheltered. But that doesn't actually give them a place to go, a place to stay. A lot of those places are still going to be full. So that is what I wanted to bring to the council for discussion, per what, what we've been talking about. This seems like the, the right way to just bring it up, and then I wanted to see other people's appetite and, you know, sorry to put it on the agenda the first meeting there year, but I know it's a heavy one.
Councilman Nichols.
Thanks. Carl, I really appreciate you bringing this up. When we were having, you know, minus 30 wind chills a couple of weeks ago, this was absolutely what I was thinking about. And the train is an important thing. I would rather spend $50,000 on keeping people warm. So I hear you with that piece, and that's going to be an unpopular thing I just said, but that's okay. I do think that there is opportunity here. If we don't have the budget to absorb an FTE, which I'm looking Julie in the eyes, and she's saying, please don't say another FTE, we do have a lot of opportunity for space to keep people warm, whether that is a government building, and I, I look at our police department, and I know they're looking at me like, absolutely, that's not what I want to, to sit in at night. But we also have opportunities for places like the buses, where at night they are idle, they are empty. So we have the opportunity that those could be warming shelters, and I know Jim is around here somewhere, probably thinking, don't say that either. But my point is, there's no perfect solution, and every department is going to say, yes, we need to fix this. Every council member's going to say, yes, we need to fix this, but then we're going to find flaws in all of the fixes. And so I think that's what we are up here to do, is to find opportunity and then work with our county partners to say, you know what, we can't afford an FTE, but we could provide city buses for you to keep people warm. And you, you keep them safe, you keep the people from fighting inside of them, but, and we'll provide the equipment. So I think that, Carl, your point, we can work with county partners on this. And I think we have an opportunity with a new city manager who I know that you will talk to the county, and you have an opportunity to create a new relationship there, which is never a bad thing, just because there's no negative history. So I'm glad you brought this up. I would be supportive of finding creative opportunities that will make as few people mad as possible, but acknowledging that there's no perfect solution here.
Councilmember Stevenson.
I guess, Carl, it sounded, we've talked, I think briefly, on something like this, but it sounds like space isn't an issue. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct. There, there is a, a faith community that has a wide-open space. I've talked a little bit about Kelly, to Kelly about it, about can it be, have a conditional use permit or a temporary use permit? But before we went down that, we wanted to make sure that there'd be some sort of appetite to make it go. But yeah, it's a Trinity faith community.
And then the, what was the funding, so the, two questions. What is the total funding amount? And then what is the, is the amount used to pay staff? Or what, what's, what's the money get you, I guess, is?
So in the model that we came up with over lots and lots of coffee, one FTE staff that would, in the winter, coordinate the volunteer areas to open the shelter and run it when there is weather conditions of whatever, you know, decides to get set. It could be 20 degrees, it could be zero degrees, it could be, you know, there, different communities do different thresholds. And then during the summer, another huge need that has been talked about in the community is a place for showers and laundry for our unsheltered residents. So that person would be a full-time, year-round, basically a coordinator that would work with the, the OPD team that is down there, because that's not really going to be their coordination of, of direct services. This would be work with that team that can be like, hey, this is a place you can go. But to, to clarify, it would not be a programmatic shelter. It would not be a dinner. It would literally be likely bottles of water, if you can get them donated, here's a, a safe place to sleep. And, you know, in the morning, they, they start their day again, most of them go over to Salvation Army. The, the faith community that I really like with Father Chris, that he has, he has an opportunity to have both basement and third floor, so you can separate families and people that should not be around families potentially, so you can, you can do individuals and families all in the same area, but not have them commingling.
And is it, are you asking us for, like, seed money, or are we?
What I am asking for is to find a way to fund the person that can run all the volunteers.
So it would be like an annual cost?
If, if we absorbed it all, it'd be an FTE. I'm not saying that we should take that on, I'm saying that somehow that needs to get, that is what's needed. The money and the, or the, the only expense for this would be.
The person.
The person.
Sure.
Other than that, it'd run like very, very shoestring budget, because it's just space, I think Rebecca asked you to.
City Manager Grill.
I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Nichols' comments about meeting with the county. I think, I don't, I've only been here since yesterday, but I think they're supposed to be handling a lot of the health and human services. We're obviously partners, so meeting with them, hopefully in, in April after the election, and talking about things like this before next winter, so we can come up with something and bring it back to the council later, I think would be a great opportunity for everyone.
We could even talk about during budget cycle.
Absolutely.
And, and yeah, I will say that I.
And are you, is this timed? I, I know it's still winter, I don't want to be insensitive, but is the, is the request like timely, or is it?
We, in the room, we were fully cognizant that it would be very unlikely to get something done this, this winter. But with this position especially, and Councilmember Larson and I were involved in a lot of focus groups over the summer, and, you know, bathrooms, showers, a place to do laundry is also a huge need for a lot of our community. So it's going to be timely whenever it decides to get implemented, if possible. And the, and Father Chris has put no sunset deadline on it. Their, their community has a strong desire to be there as a resource. They just can't absorb the, the cost of the, of the staff member either.
That was me. I was asking about timeframe. Obviously, thank you, Carl, for bringing it up, and DJ, great points as well. It's all important. Carl, I think if there's a specific ask here, I'm all for trying to find, I mean, to be proactive about it, because this will be an issue in the summer as much as it is in the winter. There will be the same types of days. When, when everything came to a head with these issues last summer, it was summer, it wasn't winter. So that is the more problematic time for this kind of situation anyway. So if there's a way to find this and make it a specific ask, for now, I'm all for it. So if we're, I mean, this is consensus and nodding heads type of stuff, I'm, I'm a nodding head on this now, as soon as possible. I don't know what that means exactly, what the, what the path forward is, but it's a great ask. It's a very generous offer from Trinity.
Yeah, and I, I don't have a resolution or a motion to, to, you know, prepared to put forward. That's why I just put it in here, but I, I guess it kind of comes down to direction to the new city manager of, this is something we have appetite for, so, you know.
Sorry, I didn't mean to insinuate, I was going to cut in there. My, my, my sound made it seem so. This has been a important topic for council for a long time, but it has been part of the previous city manager's goals for the last four years, probably, if my memory serves me. And through COVID, through the economic conditions that are out there, right, this, this situation has only grown and exacerbated, right? The amount of resources that we're currently locally spending on trying to improve this situation, or at least trying to address the situation, has grown exponentially in the last 12 to 18 months, probably. You're an expert in the field, but like, it's not just all that money. It's, it's time, it's effort, it's, it's coordination. So I get all that. I think this is a great speaking point to our county executive, whether it's current or whoever's in, after the April election. I think this is a great way to form a partnership with the county from, at the ground level, you know, starting out for, for our new city manager, and I look forward to seeing what you can report back to us as soon as you can on, on the topic. Because to your point, this isn't just a winter issue. We have cooling needs in the dead of July or August as well, that we run into issues where, you know, the folks use, use the library, but the library only has certain hours. And so it's not just a winter only, but winter just happens to be when it's at its most harshest, of course. So I think if, maybe if council's okay with that direction of, we, we await, we await a response from the city manager's office on, on some follow-up on this. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just kind of to, not to rehash what, you know, other members have said, but I think this is a good opportunity to collaborate with the county constructively, looking at what's feasible from a space perspective, an ADA perspective, knowing that Trinity has offered the space, and grateful that they are willing to step up in this regard. I mean, obviously, we don't want people being left out in the cold, literally. And so this past week was a good example of that, and that creates all sorts of issues, and this is a problem that hasn't gone away. So, you know, speaking with our peers at the county, I think it's a good start for this, and look at what's feasible, both from a public safety and sustainability perspective as well, and making sure that people aren't left behind in the cold. So, and knowing that it's a summer issue, too. We don't have an emergency shelter anymore as a community because of how day by day shifted up. So any feasibility you can look into would be much appreciated.
Councilmember Wrestler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm always open to suggestions on, if there's, well, we talked about it, looking at new ways of doing things. I'm always open to those ideas, and, you know, the, the role of government, two of the roles are to serve and protect, there's no doubt about that. But I get a little nervous, where does it end? I mean, like, we do the train, then we do this, then some other, someone comes forward, we could do something with, can you give us some money? They're all great, and they can all do a lot of things with that money. And then when it comes to tax. with that money. And then, when it comes tax time, when we send the bills out and taxes go up, then we have to explain why the taxes went up. And this year, when we had to say no to the police chief for hiring new police officers, I don't like doing that. Number one is probably because we need them, and we're basically telling one of our professionals that, while we respect your opinion, we're not gonna, not that we're not gonna listen to it, but we're not gonna follow through with it. So, you know, these are all good intentions, and if there's, if there are volunteers that could fill in for these hours to do whatever, you know, we're looking to do, you know, have we exhausted those efforts? Are there any parishioners from any other of the parishes that can, that can do this? So, but again, I'm open to ideas, but I'm, I'm a little nervous in that we're not opening up Pandora's Box. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or discussion on the topic? Appreciate you bringing this one up. Next one, overnight on-street parking study update. I did have, there were two gentlemen that stuck around that wanted to speak to us. Dale Schrader, if you wouldn't mind, coming on up, and then followed by Al Hartman. A reminder to keep to five minutes and the topic at hand.
Be my timekeeper.
We'll let you know. We'll let you know.
Councilmembers, and welcome aboard, City Manager. Welcome. My name is Dale Schrader, 672 West Ninth Avenue. Put it mildly, parking is, well, there's, I'm sure there's plenty of differing opinions. Parking on West Ninth, where I live, basically between Dakota and Ohio, is a little bit crazy right now. Tonight, I noticed there were seven cars parked on the street. I, in particular, have been having an issue with one new neighbor who has two vehicles more than he can support with his driveways, or driveway. And so consequently, I have his vehicle often parked in front of my house. And in fact, this morning, or no, yesterday morning, actually, I got up at about 5:00 when legal parking began, and parked my car on the street, and then, in front of my house, and then called the police station to get the overnight, just so that I was sure that my dumpster was in the clear for the garbage pickup this morning. That's the kinds of things that, I mean, they seem small, but, you know, it's little things like that. If I have, I was caregiver for my mom for seven and a half years, staying by her apartment, and so I'm reclaiming occup, full occupancy in my house. And there's things that I need to fix up, and I'm totally willing to do that. But the whole thing is, it's gonna involve contractors. And if I have contractors coming in and doing work, they're gonna need to be able to park in front of my house. I can go to the neighbor's door, and they don't always answer. So, trying to get a free space for contractors, for delivery men, whatever, is a problem. Also, I gotta look at my notes here, which are, my Android is pretty atrocious. I should have been a doctor. Anyways, likewise, we have issues in front of the house and that, when it comes to plowing snow. And in fact, about 10 days ago, city crews came overnight to remove the snow off of our terrace. Well, we don't have terraces. We go right from pavement to curb to city sidewalk. And so, they came and removed that, you know, about 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 they were done, and remarkable job. But some of those vehicles that were parked prevented them from clearing off the whole area. And some of those areas where the snow was not removed blocked the drainage, and consequently, the other day, we had big puddles of water going out into the street. Now, if we'd had a sudden drop in temperature, we'd have had ice, possibly causing accidents for people going in and out of their driveways, as well as people going down the street. So, that's a concern to me as well. And also, just when it comes to routine plowing in the wintertime, it's hard for the city to get around all those parked vehicles. What's the solution? I don't know. Ninth Street's a high traffic, I mean, very high traffic. And it's also extremely fast traffic. It seems like a drag strip at times. In fact, wish there were more of our, our police officers with radar on the side streets. But that's a whole nother program. But anyways, I, the way I see it, we've got to do something. And I know that you folks are talking about tonight. I didn't know that I was gonna be on an agenda item. I thought it was just gonna be, you know, speaking as, as a crazy citizen. But anyways, the thing is, two things that I would see as a possible solution, although I know it's probably gonna run into some opposition, would be daytime parking limitations, the one-hour, two-hour, or four-hour zones, so that people can't, okay, what happens is people park overnight, and they leave their vehicle there for 30-some hours. And so, it's like, do I need to go to the neighbors to get permission to park somebody in front of my house, or whatever? But that's why, like I say, I had, I actually parked on there the last 24 slash hours. The other thing would be to consider, which I know is probably going to come in the future anyhow, I know council, or rather, manager rollup seemed to really enjoy those, were the lane diets. And while it took a while for me to embrace the concept, that might be a solution. Because the thing is, essentially, it's hard with a busy street like Ninth to get in and out of driveways to begin with, or to get into them. And there's been plenty of collisions over the years right in my neighborhood. In fact, I had a person jump the street in June and actually hit the tree, damaged my neighbor's parked cars when it took out a little decorative rail fence. But the point is, that a lane diet might be a solution, although I'm sure it's not gonna fly with everybody. I mean, that's, what do you do? But I have a sneaking suspicion that if Ninth Street actually does end up on the CIP, which it's kind of been on again, off again, on again, back and forth over the years, but if indeed it actually goes on the CIP, that probably would be one of the remedies. My concern, or my thought on it is, though, we don't even need to wait until the street is repaved, because I mean, some aerosol paint and a couple of signs that indicate that, yes, this is, you know, center lane is for cross-traffic, however it's done, west of Nap Street, would probably take care of it, and would not be a big budget item. Again, though, I know you had a survey. Unfortunately, I never had any information of the survey until just recently. I don't know if it was a mailing, or if it was online, or whatever. But the point is that, so I, that's why I wanted to come this evening to make a citizen statement. If anybody has a question, I'll be more than happy, but otherwise, I thank you for your time.
Appreciate, and I appreciate you sticking around to, to speak under this topic. Thank you for that. Mr. Hartman?
Al Hartman, 2425 Patriot Lane. I wanted to thank all of you for serving. The city, the city is fortunate to have qualified people willing to serve on the council, so. Thank you. Thank you for, for being here. I know most of you, but I wanted to do a little background of who I am. I retired from UWO, have had leadership roles there, and in the community. There, I was Dean of the College of Business for about 13 years. In the community, I've chaired several task forces. Most recently, I've chaired the board for the Grand Opera House, Grand Theater. I recently chaired the board for United Way. And I'm currently chairing the Transportation Committee for you. I was on this committee twice, once about 2004, 2010. Mr. Esslinger was the representative then, and he's represented again now that I'm back.
Can't get rid of him, can you?
No, apparently not. Apparently not. We reviewed the results of the, of the poll, of the, of the survey, of citizens. And we didn't, we didn't see any particular compelling reason to change the, the policy on overnight parking. We did have one citizen speak at that meeting, and he spoke in favor of keeping the current policy. His argument was that this, by having, not having open parking overnight throughout the city, it, it helps identify situations where there may be a problem, where if somebody's car is parked there for two or three days, this gentleman's problem. Is there, is there something going on that we need to pay attention to? We had input from law enforcement, we had input from city maintenance. Both indicated that they prefer the current policy to choose to having parking overnight, generally. So, I'm here really representing the Transportation Committee and our deliberations. So, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Mr. Collins is, is better suited to answer most of them, I suspect, but I wanted to represent Trinity.
Appreciate you coming up here and representing the committee, and for serving on the committee as well. So, thank you. We don't get enough, there's not enough board chairs that actually come and speak to us, to, to convey the thoughts. So, I appreciate that a lot. Mr. Collins, do you want to start off the topic and kind of lead us a little bit on this one?
Sure. Thanks, Al, for, for sharing the Transportation Committee's deliberation. So, I'll just give you the brief, brief history. I'll keep a Reader's Digest version, and then just give you a staff's thoughts. So, as you know, this topic, council requested that the Transportation Committee, they had received, I guess, maybe a few inquiries about why we had an overnight parking restriction. So, back, I believe it was last spring-ish, you'd asked the Transportation Committee to take a look at the issue. So, the Transportation Committee, at that time, took an issue, or took a look at the issue. They thought, well, we need to get some public input on this, because we really don't have, we've heard from a few people, but we really don't have the general feeling of the public. So, the mechanism that, that the city often uses is, as the gentleman mentioned, is a poll call, which is a, a survey system. So, that survey was put out to the public, and the results were received, I believe, in around November, towards the end of last year. So, I'll just give you some, I'm not gonna, you guys can see the study. You guys have all reviewed it. You reviewed the memos, so I won't go over, rehash everything. But the, in general, I know some of the concerns were that if people understood the regulations and ease of understanding them, the survey showed that the vast majority of residents do understand that there's an overnight parking regulation, and they do understand the process to get permission to park overnight, whether that be through receiving permission from the Police Department for temporary overnight parking and/or obtaining a permit. I'm happy to report that that's even gonna be getting easier in the very near future, as the city has partnered with a software company called Passport. So, you'll be able to get your permits online. That'll eliminate, I know, the, the line at the Police Department at the beginning of the month for, for a lot of the university-area residents. And it'll also allow citizens to get those permits and manage them right from either their home on their computer or their phone. So, I think that'll maybe solve some of those issues about the understanding and the ease of, of getting permits. Some of the things that staff presented and considered with the, as along with the Transportation Committee is ease of regulation, understanding, and consistency. That's important for both the citizens and enforcement personnel. We feel that, currently, that both of those are met. There are potential unintended consequences if we do not regulate overnight parking, such as abandoned vehicles, litter, some aesthetic aspects as well. So, there's a neighborhood aspect to that. There is a revenue impact that would result from lack of permit sales and citations. There are also the revenue impact to stormwater mitigation. If we did not have the current overnight parking regulations, there's the potential that it, allowing overnight parking unrestricted could impede service, such as street sweeping, snow removal, leaf and garbage pickup, as well as mail delivery, as the, the citizen today had also spoke about. And then, there's also a public safety impact. If you have narrower streets, it makes it more difficult for police and fire vehicles to get in and out of neighborhoods. So, those are just some of the things to consider. Additionally, we did look at the number of parking complaints that the city receives. The Police Department receives about 1,300 parking complaints a year. That's a lot. The majority of those complaints are not that I want to park. The majority of them are, people are parking, impeding the ability for residents to do some of those things I mentioned earlier, or have those city services impacted. So, those are the things that, as staff considered, and as long as, as well as the Transportation Committee, and, you know, I appreciate, like I said, Chair Hartman, as well as Councilmember Esslinger on that committee, and both heard a lot of that discussion over the last year, so they can obviously answer questions as well. We also have staff from Public Works and the Police Department, so if you have any questions for them. But that's just a brief history of how we got to where we are.
Councilmember Stevenson, and then Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah. So, I, I guess first, I'd like to thank staff for putting the survey together and doing all that public outreach. I think that was a really good process, and it's kind of democracy at work there. So, I, I thank you for putting that together. I reviewed the survey, like you said, very split opinions. I think if we're splitting hairs here, the keep it the same, slightly edge out the, the change it. So, I'm under that camp. I, I think I don't have a compelling reason to, to change our policy drastically right now. I think through this whole parking process, this whole year, we've talked about parking, various downtown parking situations up to overnight parking. And I've kind of always said, I think our issue really is self-induced through not having some sort of easy software to get that. And it sounds like we're solving that. It sounds like we're gonna have the ability to get permits very readily, if you need to, on your street, but still have, still have those restrictions in place to, to not have vehicles parked forever. I will say that if you say road diet three times, I show up in your house. But I, I think this all comes, comes with a caveat. I, I do think that we, in some of our neighborhoods, in some of our smaller streets, we are building those to accommodate a full on-street parking all the time. I, I would like us to see, having maybe just one side of the street parking and put some more back into the terrace, or put some more back into creating a road diet on that street. So, I, I think keeping parking where it is right now is good, but it comes with a but. I do think we should start engineering our roads to be a little bit smaller, because we're, we're moving forward with not having constant on-street parking all the time. It's more of ancillary parking for when your aunt comes over, or you have a family get-together for a couple of hours. It's not meant to be permitted on-street parking. So, those are my, my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols, followed by Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. And so, I, I first made this request to look into this on May 11th. So, I'm glad that the work has been done, and we're talking about it now. I think that's super helpful. And I reviewed everything you said. Director Collins reached out to me several times to talk about it before this meeting, and I, my schedule didn't allow me to call him back. So, we're, we're talking for the first time. But I guess I have a couple of questions, and then I have some thoughts. But if I'm reading the memo right, the Transfer Committee, Transportation Committee and staff believe that parking on the street is important in our residential areas. Does that, I have that part right?
I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, it, it depends, I guess. As far as overnight parking and allowing overnight parking, I, I think for the majority of the citizens, you know, that it probably isn't as big of a concern. But I, I guess it's probably depends, like, somebody referred to area, what, what area you live in, you know, and how, how big is your driveway? How big is your, your garage? You know, some of those things.
Yeah, but at least in some areas, we would say it's important that we have the ability to park, either, either during the day or at night.
I would say for some it is, for some it isn't.
And I guess maybe the, my second question then, is we're investing, I think it's a couple hundred thousand dollars into the Passport program. Is that, do you remember that offhand? I don't know if you was back there, but it, it was six figures, if I'm remembering right, what we're spending on Passport, to make it easier for people to get parking permits.
I don't have the number.
And that's okay. And, and if that's the case, I would think we, as a city, if we're gonna say a hundred thousand dollars plus, in order to make it easier for people to get parking permits, we're saying, as a city, we, we see value in people parking on the street. We think they should, but only if they pay the fee and get the permit.
Well, the, the Passport software, so it's gonna do three things. It's not, it's not just on-street parking permits. It's also permits in the city lots, and it also has an enforcement piece to it as well. So, it's, it's kind of a multifaceted solution. So, it's solving a number-
I, I guess, I think it's, it's very nuanced. I, I think 100% of, like, the college campus area, we're, we're wanting some sort of parking capacity. But then, when you're getting out in, like, West Haven, or even in my neighborhood-
but then when you're getting out in like West Haven, or even in my neighborhood, where the streets are built the exact same width and I would say it's very nuanced. I don't think there's one yes or no.
If we could let Councilmember Nichols keep going on his thought.
Thanks. And that's exactly my point, that we have a one-size-fits-all policy for a city. And granted, we're a 70,000-person city, which doesn't feel like a big city, but we're a city. And so I think that you expect street parking when you're in a city, and we expect it as a council, we expect it as staff, because we've said, not only are we going to require permits if you want to park on the city overnight, because we think you should be able to sometimes if you pay a fee. But we are going to implement a new software program to make it easier for you to park overnight, whether it's in the city lot, or if it's on the street. And we care about the revenue source too, so we're going to have an enforcement mechanism within that app. And to Councilmember Stevenson's point, some areas, like the university, maybe parking should be differently restricted than somewhere like where I live, on Bowman Street, where there's plenty of room to get by on the street if someone's parked on the street. So I guess those are my questions as I looked at it. I saw that there's no compelling reason to make a change. That was what stood out to me. Linnal appreciate that words, and especially when you talk about compelling reasons, that just, it makes me light up as a lawyer, because what is a compelling reason is what I think about. So I thought of a few compelling reasons that I would just like to mention that I didn't see in the memo. One is we allow street parking between 2:00 and 5:00, but only if someone permit, gets a permit, pays a fee. That, I know we don't love charging people fees as a council, but that seems like a pretty compelling reason that we see value in it, but only if you pay a fee. The second one is, we also charge vehicle owners a registration fee for every vehicle that is parked in the city of Oshkosh. That was not true when these parking regulations went into effect, so I think we need to revisit it. I think that's a pretty compelling reason to make a change. We're a car-reliant community, no doubt, and many older homes, I know we've heard people talk about this, they don't have the driveway space to allow for a family of cars. When I say family of cars, I mean mom and dad and kids, or dad and dad and kids, or dad and three kids who become driving edge. They just don't have the space, but we want them, to give them the ability to get around town. That seems like a pretty compelling reason to make a change. And then I'll mention too, the concerns of residents when we hear about the parking regulations, they often come with pictures, which means that our parking regulations that people think are important in order to prohibit bad behavior, behavior that they perceive as bad, they're not being followed. So they're ineffective at actually controlling behavior. And I think that's a pretty compelling reason to make a change. But I know, like I said, I brought this up on May 11th, Jim, you and I have talked about it, and I appreciate you and the Transportation Committee for looking at this. But as I look at this, I think there's lots of opportunity here, not only to educate the public on what our rules are, or to put up new signage so that we have, actually have cars moved and enforcement mechanism in the event that we have a snow emergency on Ninth Street, it's a major road, and we need all of the cars gone when there's, you know, more than two inches of snow, for example. We could actually enforce those regulations in a different way and make it safer. But I've been beating this drum for almost a year, so I'll defer to everyone else on council and welcome those thoughts. But I think that signage, education, and I think there's opportunity there. So thanks.
I'm going to ask just Chief Smith to come up for a second, just to address one of your concerns. So, you know, yes, so I think that as far as on-street parking being important, it is important, like I said, it's very nuanced as you mentioned, or as council mentioned. However, you know, there is a mechanism for people that need to park either temporarily or permanently, and that is through either temporary permission through the police department, which I know even one of the speakers at the last council meeting, I read, kind of watched the statement, I kind of read it, and he didn't like it. However, he said, "Well, for instance, my girlfriend, you know, was here and she called the police department, I didn't have any problem with it, seemed to make sense." So again, he understood it and he was okay with that, you know. Would he like some different maybe? But anyway, as far as the different areas, that is something that was discussed. As far as the, as far as enforcement goes, ease and consistency of the regulations is the reason that the current policy kind of works. But from, I know from an enforcement standpoint, one of the concerns of the sergeant that was there is, and Chief Smith can speak to this, that if you allow it in one area and not in another area, what happens is people tend to gravitate to whatever area meets whatever their desires are, whether they live there or not. I don't know if you want to speak to that.
I guess I do. And Jim's absolutely right, when you, and I'll speak specifically to the university area. We have a finite amount of parking spaces within the university area. Each parking space is clearly defined, and whenever Jim finds a new one, he brings it before you and says, "We'd like to designate this as a permitted parking space." We actually right now in the police department keep a log of, like Jones Street will have three parking spaces available, we'll issue three permits. But when you start to, when you start to change where parking is allowed and not allowed, you impact, you impact other areas that were unintentional, because, well, the university, I can't park there, but I can go across Jackson Street and I can park anywhere I want to. And now you're creating another problem in another part of the community because you're treating that part of the, another part of the community different. It's like water. Water's going to find its way, and when you start to move where you can or can't go, it's just going to adversely impact another part of the community that currently isn't experiencing that. The university parking right now is horrible. We know that. There's a lot of, a lot of folks that live there, there's a lot of houses that probably have more people than they should have in them, and there are a lot of cars. But there is a process right now in place, and there's going to be an enhanced process in place with Passport that's going to allow, to hopefully improve what's going on in the parking in that area. To the part of consistency and enforcement, we generally, at night I'll have at least two folks working two to five parking enforcement, but that's only two people that cover the whole city. So there's not the ability to go to every part of the city and do enforcement. There are times where people, they got lucky because we weren't in that particular part of the city. And then all of a sudden they got a ticket and, well, I never got a ticket, but now I get a ticket. Well, we worked through the city, so we're trying to be equal across the city through the enforcement efforts. It's a, it's a kind of an orchestra on how we do this, and there's so many different moving parts. And it's kind of, it's, it's been, I would argue it's been effective, although those who get parking tickets don't like it. It just is. I often say that you can commit a horrible crime and people will confess to us that they did it and they'll go to sleep in an interview room. You give me a parking ticket and I will argue it till the day I'm done. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
I really appreciate that. If I could just speak to one, to one thing you mentioned, I acknowledge that enforcement is going to be, if we have two people managing the entire city between 2:00 and 5:00, that's going to be difficult. Personally, I would rather spend that staff time, that police officer time, doing something other than issuing parking tickets.
They're not police officers.
I would rather spend those FTEs or those part-time employee hours that we have in the city budget doing something other than issuing parking tickets. And so that's, that's personal opinion. I mean, I know that that's a bigger, much bigger conversation and I value those people, but I would, in terms of what the city does on a nightly basis, that's something I think about. In terms of, you know, where, I've lived in a city where the exact concern, if you treat areas differently, existed, and you would have zoned parking. And so if I live in the Marina District neighborhood, which I do, and I want to park in front of my house, which I might, I need to make sure I put a sticker on my car that says I live there, and I would get that from City Hall. And I'm allowed to park there whenever I want to park there. I've lived in places where that's true universally from 24 hours a day, or it's only true after 6:00 PM, because we want to make sure that when people come home from work, they have a spot on their street to park their car. So I think there's opportunity here to allow people to park overnight between 2:00 and 5:00. I think that's really, that's my concern, is we've designated those hours as the ones you got to pay for if you want to park in front of your house.
Deputy Mayor first, followed by Councilmember Larson.
I really appreciate Director Collins and Chief Smith coming up, because two of my least favorite things are going right after Councilmember Nichols and disagreeing with him. But here we are. Especially for the reasons that Mr. Dale said, you know, having space outside your house and the two to five parking. The feedback that I've gotten on this, and I don't know what everybody else has received, has been two very different and equally as loud groups. I want to be able to park wherever I want, and I don't want other people parking near my house. Those are the two themes that seems to come up and I, you know, not criticizing it, I totally understand it, because I have the same situation with trying to get trash out in my house when somebody parks in front of my house. Somebody was there parked when the, when the snowplows came through and it created a huge mess. I had to actually go out there and snow blow the street after they did move their car, totally get it. I am in favor of the Transportation Committee's recommendation here to not make any major changes after what's been studied for, you know, like you said, almost a year now, nine months. And so that's going to be my summary here, is that I am in favor with the staff and the committee's recommendations.
Councilmember Larson.
I'm going to go after DJ and agree with DJ, because that's easy too. But having, I mean, wholeheartedly agree with that take on it. I think we can do this better. I think there are nuanced ways to do it better. I don't think it needs to be one thing that applies to everybody. I think that's confusing the folks. Dale, you and I had a good conversation about it. That honestly, I think, is part of the problem, that we're trying to make one rule work for everyone, and that's not going to be possible, because Carl, to your point, the people I talked to in West Haven don't want anybody parked on the road ever. People on Ninth Street need to park on the road sometimes. So having, I mean, I live in Madison where there were specific and explicit rules as to where you can park and why, and who got which permit, and where it belonged and what you did. I think we can do that. I mean, I'm slightly, I'm not disappointed that this took a long time to get here, but I don't think we should do nothing. So if that's the ask, I don't think that this should be the end of it. I think there's a way to do this better. I don't know how we get there, but I don't think this should be all there is to it.
Councilmember Flo.
Yeah, so looking at this, number of things that come to mind, the first thing is, my cousin is a UWO student, she's going to hate that I'm bringing this up, but she got towed in front of the university because her building does not manage its lot well. It doesn't really restrict who can and cannot park in there. So she can't park there, she moved onto the street, she was on Marion, she got towed. So understanding that we have Passport now, having some more education around permits, that may mitigate some of the issues in the university area. But I don't think this is quite finished yet. There are people who are very, very passionate about both sides of this issue, and I understand people are going to have more cars than they can necessarily have the storage amount for. And I do think that you have a right to park in front of your own house. If you buy the property, you pay the extra $35 a year in wheel tax, you do all that, you follow the rules, can't you park in front of your own home? So I think there are more creative options that we can look at here over time. I appreciate the work the Transportation Committee did. And I understand the fact that if you regulate the city differently in different areas, you are going to get an overflow issue potentially. But I think there are certain items that we can take a look at, such as stickers, such as neighborhood permitting, things like that, which will allow people who live in that neighborhood to be able to park there overnight. So I understand this is a very passionate issue for both sides of it, people who do not want to see anybody parked anywhere, and people who rely on street parking. I live downtown, so people rely on street parking. So in the future, I'd like to see some sort of potential research into something like a neighborhood sticker system, if people would like to do that, as opposed to saying, no, you know, you pay the property taxes, you pay the wheel tax, you do all these things, but you can't park in front of your own home. So for me, I know it's a tricky issue, but that's something I would like to see researched.
Councilmember Essler.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm going to shock everyone by saying I really have no opinion on this. How you have an opinion on everything, as you all well know. No, I'm, I think the chief said it best, there's just so many moving parts with this. And I've heard both sides of this argument, you know, Councilmember Flo says, "I pay the wheel tax, I pay the tax on my house, I should be able to park in front of my house." I agree with that. Then you have the gentleman, you know, with the, "I can't even get my bin down there." So I think both sides of this argument make a very good case. And Councilmember Larson said, you know, is there something? I think we're, I think we're close. I don't know, I just don't have the answer. Director Collins, I know we talked briefly on the phone. What about the thought of allowing parking from April to November, December, something? Because I think in the wintertime, you know, once you've got the snow and you've got the bins, and then you're trying to plow around, I think that's pretty problematic. I think that side kind of loses the arguments of being able to do that unless you have the permit, and you know, you go through that process, that's fine. But in the summertime, you have maybe less moving parts. And so I don't remember if we talked at the traffic level about that, that option or that, you know, if.
Sure. So, yeah, I mean, we laid out a number of different alternatives for the Transportation Committee to consider. The research we've done that cities all over, all over the state are all over the board, you can find any type of policy you want. I mean, there are some that are the same as us, there are others that are much different than us, there are some that just allow unrestricted. However, I will go back to, I strongly support, I think the current system is easy to understand and it seems to work. If people need or want to park on-street, they have options. They still have to follow alternate parking side rules. But I will, I'm going to call Assistant Director Godey up to speak from a public works perspective, because the, the other thing that hasn't been mentioned yet that the Transportation Committee considered was the street maintenance. And in particular, there is, in addition to plowing, which I'm sure that they can speak to, there also is street sweeping that goes on for a good part of the year. That helps with stormwater management mitigation that is required. So if we start allowing more on-street parking than we currently do, that is going to have a negative impact and some potential revenue consequences as well. You know, obviously you know, and I know that from talking to some citizens as well, that, you know, taxes are a concern. I've heard that, you know, through many council meetings. So we can do something different, however, there is a revenue impact, and I think that's what I told the reporter yesterday that we were speaking with, and they said, "Well, if you didn't have, you know, whatever sorts of revenue, how would you make that up?" As you know, as a municipality, you know, there's only a couple sources of revenue and the majority of it is taxes, right? So that's something for you to consider as well. But I'll ask the, either Assistant Director Godey or City Engineer Garrett to speak as to the impact of having or not having overnight parking regulations as far as street maintenance goes.
I'll touch briefly on some of our DNR stormwater permitting side of it. So as a municipality, we've got a MS4 permit that the DNR issues, and as a part of that, there are different ways we can meet the minimum control measures that we have in the city. One of them, on our current parking regulations, allows us to street sweep at night. And the modeling that we do as a part of that gives us numeric value of both TSS suspended solids, as well as total phosphorus that gets removed from the system when we do those, the street sweeping. The DNR also, once, from 2011 on, forward, does not allow us to go backwards in those numbers. So we currently are permitted at a certain level, we need to maintain that level. So if there are parking regulations that changed and we would allow parking overnight, we would lose those numeric numbers that we'd have to make up elsewhere. Briefly, a study that we have done with Bonn Caldwell on this, kind of gave some numeric values to what that looks like. Ponds that we had constructed approximately 10 years ago, cost anywhere from $3 million to construct to make up that difference in those requirements that we have. Again, 10-plus years ago, we got inflation. One of the ponds that was approved in the 2022 citywide study did not even get to those levels of management practices, cost estimated at over $7 million. So how much this is going to cost on the stormwater side, if a change is made, is really to be determined on what that change is going to be. I'll also add that in conversations with the DNR from the consultant that we had, it's very specific, or it's going to be very case-by-case basis on what changes are made for what has to get done and when. So they may require the numeric values to be online and implemented before any changes can get made because of the reductions that would end up being had by that, changes that were made.
Councilmember Larson.
Easy one, I think. In reading that study and those emails, which I did ahead of time, and they're awesome to have in here, so thank you for the pre-read, it looks like the recommendation of just being even odd all the time came up a lot. So unrestricted but even odd, was that something that the parking, that you guys talked about ahead of time, Jim or no? I didn't see that part in here. That's the only suggestion I've gotten from anybody who talks to me about this that might make sense, is to do unrestricted but do even odd all the time, because that allows, allows lots of the things you want to have happen, happen, and seemingly is easier for folks.
That is a policy option that was considered along with the study. And again, they, the. And again, they, the Transportation Committee considered that. They considered a laundry list of different options. That was one of them, and decided based on the input that, that what we currently have is what they recommended. You know, as far as what's possible, yeah, there's a lot of things that are possible.
Sure.
That was the recommendation. I don't know if you want to speak.
Do you want to? Chair Hartman, did you want to add to?
As Jim and Mr. Collins pointed out, we did review all of those. And one of the things we have to remember, I think, is that people in responding to this poll, it's more likely people are going to respond who want to make a change as to peoples who are thinking that, you know, things are going all right as they are. So when I looked at the results, I looked at them saying, well, you know, this is going to be a bit biased in terms of who's going to respond to this, to this survey. So we did look at those, those options, and, you know, we had the same conversation about the implications for stormwater and the implications for safety as well.
Certainly touch on the operations side just a little bit. Certainly, snow plowing is a concern. Those plows are relatively wide. I know annually, we have issues where the plows will clip vehicles, cause some damage, cause a claim. It happens as a result of those vehicles being out there, especially as the streets get narrower as winter proceeds. If we've got snowbanks that are getting farther onto the street, it narrows the streets up more if we can't get them cleaned and done. Alternate side parking certainly would allow operations to be adjusted potentially on that, although I don't know how that would necessarily work where you can't park on both sides of the street in some areas. To touch on the street sweeping side a little bit, for kind of kicking off the spring season, our Streets Department runs four sweepers five days a week during the day of 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the first shift. Second shift and third shift run a sweeper five days a week. So we're trying to get into those areas where there, the parking is utilized heavily during the day, the downtown areas, the business areas where they're using the on-street parking during the day. We're trying to get in there in the evenings and night hours to get that area swept then versus the daytime and vice versa. Typically, sweeping, you know, those residential areas during the day when people are gone and not, and then when they're back home in the evening, we're not trying to sweep those areas. So that keep, the, the four sweepers a day for five days a week continues on through the spring through about the first six weeks. Once the initial cleanup is done for the spring, usually around June 1, they're running three sweepers a day for five days a week, first shift, and then running, second shift, they attempt to run one sweeper as often as possible, depending on other job duties and staff availability. But they do run one sweeper continuously five days a week on third shift. And then as we go into the fall, it's fairly, very similar again, where four sweepers during the day for five days a week, one sweeper when available on second shift, and then third shift is also done when possible. But due to falling temperatures in the fall season, running those at night can be problematic, freezing, freezing, and the sweepers do not get along well.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah, I guess maybe this is like, this is unfair math question, so I acknowledge that, but maybe you know the answer. And timing question is more accurate. What percentage of residential neighborhoods are street swept or does snow removal occur between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00 in the morning? Would you think it's like 5% or 10%, less than 20%?
It depends on, it's going to be very nuanced again. It's just going to depend on the street, the geometry of the street, the terraces, the widths. There's so many different nuances in the operations that occur on different streets depending on the parking situation, the terrace situation, all of that. I can't give you a number.
But from what it sounds like is that the intent is that you're going to do street sweeping when the cars are not there. We assume the cars are not in residential neighborhoods during the day, and it's more likely we're going to sweep downtown in the middle of the night. Is that?
I would say that's in general, generally that's the intent.
And so if we're street sweeping something at 2:00 in the afternoon, we allow parking there without a permit today, right?
Yes.
On residential streets. So I don't know that that's inhibiting a change. I guess maybe it's the phrase compelling reason in the memo that I'm struggling with because that's, that's not prohibiting any of these functions. Snow removal is another great example. If it snows at, if we start, if we start snow removal at 3:00 a.m., or started at midnight, once the car is parked there at 5:00 a.m., if it continues snowing, we're going to have to still remove that snow, and it's completely fine for it to be parked there, right? Like, we don't, we have no restrictions on street parking during snowstorms, right?
Actually, we do.
During the day?
During a snow emergency. The Works Director has the ability to call for a snow emergency with the requirement to clear all streets off of.
So it's all, all vehicles off of all streets?
Yes.
And do, have we done that this year?
Not this year.
So that seems like a better solution, if we already have that tool, to say, we don't want to clip cars. We want to make sure that we're able to plow things sufficiently. That seems like a sufficient solution to me. Anyway, I said I wasn't going to beat the drum anymore, and here I am beating the drum. But I think having an approach of no parking between 2:00 and 5:00, and if we are going to assume, we're not going to hope, that seems like too strong of a word, but we're going to assume that we're going to have revenue generated from this, and we're going to go ahead and put that in, in the bank, and we're going to charge you if you want to park in front of your house in the middle of the night. That just doesn't seem like a great use of our time when we could say, we're going to come up with an effective solution to allow you the parking that you need. That's where I'm struggling with this. So, thanks.
I think I'm the only one that hasn't spoken on this one. So my tally says there's, there's a few that would like to pursue some level of change. What that is, there's no clear-cut direction on what that level of change is, and then there's a handful that, that don't want to, that are interested in that and would like to leave it as is. Where I fall right now is that I prefer to give, we've made a commitment to this passport app that we're going to, that we're investing in. We've made a commitment to that. The reasons for the Transportation Committee to look at this topic, there was a multitude of reasons that were brought up last April and May. It wasn't just one thing. It was, it was many. I'm interested to see how the implementation of that app and the usage of that impacts our residents and their usage of it, and if there's a reduction in, in these types of issues, if there's a overall improvement in, you know, customer service and those types of things. So I'm interested in seeing that before I'm, before I'm, before I'd be interested in making any substantive changes to our current parking policies. I'd like to see how this works and see how it impacts operations going forward. So that's kind of where I fall on this one. Councilmember Ellsinger?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Two people I'd like to hear their opinion. A new city manager, you know, he comes from Wisconsin. You know the drill here, and kind of interested to hear your thoughts on what you've done, where you come from. Are we all wet here? Are we on the right track? Are we, you know, on a different road? Pardon the pun. And then I would like to hear Mr. Fitzpatrick's opinion. He's not only been in Oshkosh many, many years, but he's been on the city staff many, many years. So I think, you know, his perspective could be from as an Oshkosh citizen and one who has controlled or has been in control of many staffs and understands these issues maybe better than the council does. So if I can just tap both of you guys for some information, if I could.
Sure. So I worked in West Dallas for the last 10 years, and we did have overnight parking between 2:00 and 5:00.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We did have overnight parking permits between 2:00 and 5:00, and then permission from the police department. So similar to what is here, we did employ the use of snow emergencies on a more regular basis. The challenge with that is people are supposed to clear, and then you have to tow them, but you don't have enough tow trucks to tow them, and so people become very frustrated that, you know, we're not able to get the people off the streets. When I worked in Milwaukee, or lived in Milwaukee, they had the similar night parking permits. And in different areas, obviously, not sure how familiar you are, but on the east side of Milwaukee, it's very congested. So there's different type of parking restrictions there. When I worked in the city clerk's office there, we issued $2 permits that people were literally ready to kill you over if they couldn't get it because you could only give, like, so many per, per household. So I guess, to me, you're not, I don't know what you said, all wet or off the charger or whatever.
Don't listen to what I say.
It's, it's not, it's, you're doing what's similar, I think, parking, snow removal, you know, garbage. These are really, people really care about this. So whatever you do, someone's going to be mad about. So I don't have, I also don't have a strong feeling one way or another, but just my experiences from those other municipalities, they've essentially done the same, the same thing.
Well, the first thing I, I want to say is, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to speak whenever I have the opportunity. But the second thing is, you know, I just had a new boss start yesterday, and I completely agree with everything that she's said. So I think those are the two major points that I wanted to get across. But seriously, I think, you know, I've spoken to Councilmember Ellsinger about this issue, I think, over many years. And I think what has been identified by the Transportation Committee, by staff, by council, is really what you see with parking and what City Manager Grill said. It's a very complex problem. It's like, you know, squeezing a balloon, you know? It just pushes out in a variety of different directions. I, I know because I've worked with this council for some time now, since this past April, I know they want to do the right thing for the community. I know they want to make it better. I know they've challenged staff to continue to make it better, and staff, you know, readily accepts that challenge. But I think in this case with transportation, I know that the Transportation Committee's use of words, no compelling reason, was difficult for you to accept, Councilmember Nichols. But I don't think they meant it in a challenging manner. I think they meant it in what has been illustrated here tonight, and also what my new boss has said, that it's, it's a very complex problem, and I think it's very difficult to solve. That doesn't mean we shouldn't look at it, of course, but, but I think there are a lot of, there could be a lot of unintended outcomes. I'm hopeful for what is going to take place with the new passport system. But I don't disagree with what has been said tonight, especially by multiple departments from a staff perspective.
We don't have, there's no clear direction to give, so at this time, it's going to be status quo until something else changes, is what, is what I'll summarize as. So unless there's anything further, we'll move on to future agenda items. Appreciate the, the good conversation on this topic, as well as appreciate the Transportation Committee's efforts. Please express that to the whole committee from this call. I think I can speak for council probably one time at least, that we appreciate all the efforts that they've given this topic on it for us. Process to place items on council agenda, we're going to have something, should be in the next council agenda. I want to have an opportunity to speak with Ms. Grill on the topic before suggesting anything further, and we'll see what our conversation brings out, and that may push it back to even the next meeting after that. I don't think it's exceptionally time-sensitive at the moment as council's figuring out how to get things on the agenda as evident tonight, so. But that will be on a very soon for a little bit more clarification, maybe more formalization of that process. Any other future agenda items? Otherwise, we'll move on to council member statements and announcements. The buttons are now working magically at the very end of the meeting, of course. So Councilmember Nichols, it's all yours.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge because the, the meeting is on February 25th, that 43 years ago, this is just a history lesson because it's fun, and this is my time to say whatever I want, I think. But on February 25th, 1982, Governor Lee Dreyfus of Wisconsin, is Republican by the way, signed a statewide anti-discrimination bill, making it illegal to discriminate against gays and lesbians in Wisconsin. We were the first state to do that, which is pretty cool. I'm the only openly gay man sitting up here today, and I'm proud about that. And I'm also proud to live in a place where our legacy is that we were the first to make sure that I could sit here today. I think that's an exciting thing and something that we need to acknowledge. And I hope we, as a city, as a state, continue to live up to that legacy, and I just wanted to acknowledge it because we happen to be here on the anniversary. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council member announcements or statements? Otherwise, we'll move on to the city manager announcements and statements. The rest is yours, Ms. Grill. Well, you don't have to do that. It's live for you over there.
Okay. I didn't really practice this part, so I guess I'm just going to be going through items 32 to 35. The first one is a purchase of a one-ton pickup from, for the forestry division for $50,000. I don't know if there's any questions on that. The next one is another one-ton pickup, but also, this is for the water utility for Any questions? Okay. And then the next is two-zero turn mowers for the cemetery division for $27,000. Questions?
You can just zoom through those. We will stop you if we have questions.
Okay. All right, great. I have questions, but I'll ask those later to the staff. And then the last one is a sidewalk tractor for the, for the Streets Division for $54,000. And the next item, I just wanted to remind people that we really need to make sure that they're clearing their sidewalks and the public areas. We talked earlier about people not being able to get through, especially people with mobility issues and things like that, when there's snow on the sidewalks and ice on the sidewalks. Also need to make sure that people are clearing out the fire hydrants. If there's a fire, the fire department needs to be able to quickly access the fire hydrants. The stormwater inlets, we don't need those to be flooding and flooding people's basements and things like that. Also, there's a lot of free libraries, little libraries that people could access, so keeping those free. So I just want to remind people to be good neighbors and clean up your street. I understand from looking at my phone that there's going to be some snow and ice through the rest of this week, so they'll have another opportunity to be good neighbors this week. Thank you. And the outstanding issues, do you need to talk about those?
Generally, we don't have to talk specific ones unless council wants to talk about specific ones. They will. Otherwise, when, if and when you have updates you want to give them to us, that's, that's an appropriate time, too. Anything else from your desk? Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.